Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you could all just stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Public comment is limited to three minutes and must be general in nature. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to verification and posting of the agenda, please.
Pam Moore, for the record. The agenda was posted on September 12th between the hour of eight and nine at the locations listed on the agenda, save for the state's website because it was still down at that point, but it is back up and running.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Can I get a motion for that agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Appointment number six, consideration of possible action, approval of the minutes, and meeting held on June 18th, 2025, and July 16th, 2025. Can I get a motion for those, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find that staff shortage in the clerk treasurer's office have caused delays to the completion of the minutes and to approve the minutes of the meetings held on June 18th, 2025, and July 16th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Our first appointment, seven A, recognition of the following athletes: Madeline Woolsey, Axon Wick, Joel Del Cruz, Kelton Fitzpatrick, and Caleb Aguilar, who are advancing to the Pitch, Hit, and Run Championship in West Sacramento on October 4th, 2025. Is Rick here to speak to this? Go ahead and come up. And it'll be the little red button at the bottom of the microphone.
Yes, there is. The very bottom one. Can you hear me now?
You can.
Okay. For all of you and everybody in the audience, this is gonna be awesome. Three and a half years ago, I was watching a Major League ballgame, and I saw a commercial for Pitch, Hit, and Run skills competition for kids between eight and 13 years old. And I said, hey, maybe that's something we could do at the Elks Lodge by sponsoring the competition. So for the last three years, we have done that. And this year, we have five athletes that have been invited to participate at the Western Regional Championships over at the home of the Homeless As in West Sacramento. And that's gonna take place October 4th. And it's a ton of fun for the kids. They had a blast participating, and we have a blast sponsoring it every year. And we're gonna do it again next year. And I felt, seeing as how these kids are going to represent Churchill County over there in West Sacramento, what better than to get the county commissioners to recognize them? That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from border staff? If not, how many of the kids do we have here?
We have three.
Three of them. Okay. Let's take a picture with them, and we'll get that on Facebook and everything.
And thank you in the Elks for everything you guys do for the community.
We'll jump to seven B, presentation of employee service awards for the third quarter of 2025. And with that, I'll pass it off to County Manager Chris Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Ross, for the record. So it's that time of year again where we do the presentation of the employee service awards. This will be for the third quarter of 2025. Again, the county would like to thank all the employees for their continued service. And with that, we will start. We'll start with our five-year service awards. The first from Social Services and the Life Center is Jennifer Lambert, and I was just told she's not here, so. Again, with five years from Community Activities, Parks, and Recreation, Larissa Sanchez. We're 0-for-2. For 10 years, from the Road Department, Clint Allegra. And also with 10 years, from the Sheriff's Office, Sam White. And I know this person is here because I see them. And with 20 years of service with the Juvenile Probation Office, Brandon Byrd. And again, we want to thank all the employees for their continued service. The county appreciates that.
And for the last one, we have our very own County Manager, Chris Sp- Ross. Congratulations to all of you as well. We'll jump to seven C, consideration of possible action, update of current activities, plans, or actions related to the BLM for the Carson City District. And the floor is all yours.
Hey, good afternoon. Zach Reichel with the Bureau of Land Management. We don't have really a whole lot of updates, but there are, there might be some significant ones that we need to touch on. The first thing I want to bring your attention to is, obviously, we adopted new NEPA regulations, not new NEPA regulations, but a process by which we are doing environmental assessments and environmental impact statements. We also, as part of recent process improvements, we have accepted 433 categorical exclusions. That is the lowest level of compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act. These are individual actions that have been done over a period of time and are very similar in nature to ones that we're proposing. And over a period of time, it's been proven that those types of actions have no real environmental effect or impact. And so the, us adopting the 433 categorical exclusions allows us to process similar actions in a much more expedited manner. For instance, right-ofways or renewal of right-ofways where existing power lines are and they're not going to be doing anything else, that generally would have required us to do a different form of NEPA. It's now, we're able to perform that with a categorical exclusion. And there's a number of other actions that we have been able to adopt. The National Defense Authorization Act, obviously, we met with the county, with the Bureau of Reclamation, and the Navy on 9/12 of this month, and had discussions about the Sand Canyon Road realignment. The BLM has presented their, the options that, that we're, have for the county, for the city manager. And I believe that there was a follow-up that the, the, the commission was going to meet with the Navy to discuss a possible path forward. That's all I really have with that. The B-16 grazing final notice or determination decision was actually put in place or decided on 9/3, 2025. The appeal period is open on that decision until October 10th. So that is the, the time when individuals can appeal that, that decision and bring that to IVLA or to the, well, to IVLA. National Defense Authorization Act, the Churchill County Checkerboard Resolution Implementation Strategy, that was presented, it was approved by our state director, and it was presented to the county, to the city manager at a meeting, at the IEC meeting, and is, I believe, going back to, for the, the county commissioner and the city manager to review that plan and, and provide their input into the proposed plan from the Bureau of Land Management. There's really no updates to State Route 361 or the Great Basin Pipeline Relocation Project. We're still working with FERC and with the Navy and the, the Great Basin in order to figure out how we're gonna proceed with that, with the environmental compliance. And then I'll turn it over to Mark.
Some updates regarding grazing and range management. So we're working on implementing a first-of-its-kind project for prescribed grazing with an operation by East Gate Ranch. This is with Pleasant Valley Livestock. We're expecting the grazing to begin on October 1st. This is related to also fuel loading. This picture over here is from the project where you have a high annual load of the annual grasses, which can really contribute to fire if it gets there. Past that, we're focusing on our grazing permit renewals for the NDAA allotments with monitoring occurring on B-16, B-17, and B-20. And then regarding the Greater Sage Grass Amendment, so there's a Nevada-specific record of decision, because this is an EIS, expected to come out next month. There's been a few states that have implemented some decisions or had a decision specific to their state regarding this plan. This is one that's gone through scoping, comment periods, and a few other things that we presented here. Now, the link there, that's the ePlanning page. You can read about each action, something regarding mining, something regarding geothermal, and what restrictions or lack of restrictions would be put in place for each of those habitat There's not too many updates regarding the Wild Horse and Burrow Program. We did get our La Hunt and Gather EA out, and right now, what we're waiting on is the fiscal year '26 gather schedule, which is determined by our headquarters' office. We did receive an appeal for the Gather EA, and there is also, in October 25th, adoption event at the Northern Nevada Correctional Center in Carson City. Okay. Regarding geothermal projects, the two in Churchill County, Dixie Meadows, right now, what we're waiting on is for the proponent to initiate via sundry notice for the baseline studies that they would need to complete for the Dixie Meadows project. For the Diamond Flat project, that was approved under alternative arrangements with emergency permitting back in June. And then for the lease sale, there are these Carson Desert parcels up in northern Churchill County, and next month, they'll be publishing the signed Fonzie and Decision Record, and then they'll also be doing the geothermal lease sale. So once the leases are acquired, they could move forward into resource confirmation, and they can move forward from there into production with a, an additional environmental assessment or review prior to each one of those steps occurring.
For the minerals projects, we have Cosmo Lithium Exploration. This is a project that we were approved for, under a CX in Dixie Valley, and they're moving forward with that. They also have two areas where they're doing notice-level exploration in Dixie Valley. We've reported on those in the past. If Cosmo wanted to do more, you know, exploration or further resource confirmation, that would disturb more than the five acres that they've already submitted for, then that would have to be processed under another environmental alternative, probably an environmental assessment or something of that nature. So we're moving forward with that. Bell Mountain Mine, there's been no actual movement on that to date. Special recreation permits, we have one that's coming up, and that is the Legacy Gold Rush. That's gonna be happening in, between October 9th and October 12th. And then we have the Sand Mountain Halloween event that's going to be happening in, well, at Sand Mountain, obviously. And that's going to draw a fairly large cloud, crowd, as it usually does. We're starting to get into the busy, busy season with that, and with, I guess, Easter and Columbus Day and some of those holidays also draw a number of people as well, so.
Okay. Lands of Realty, so the Green Link North project, that's a major transmission line going across Nevada. So the Nevada State Office out of Reno is the lead on the project. Right now, what's occurring is there's a protest resolution. That's gonna involve the headquarters' office of BLM, so we're waiting on more information to how they're gonna resolve that protest before we'll have any additional information. And for the Edwards Creek War Canyon, right away, we don't have any updates on that project. And that's it. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, guys. Any questions or comments from border staff?
Zach, we have yet to, the county has yet to receive the Checkerboard Resolution draft that we went over in our, in our meeting. Can you, can you get that over to us so we can begin that review process?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from border staff? Okay. Thank you, guys, for your time. We'll jump to seven D, consideration of possible action, creation of a full-time legal intern position with the Office of the Public Defender, titled Legal Intern, compensation at grade 44, step one, at $22.14 an hour. And with that, I'll pass it off to Jacob Workim, whoever wants to lead it.
I will be happy to. Commissioner Ghetto, Commissioners, thank you very much for your consideration of this. I will try to be as short as I can. In summary, we have spent a great deal of time trying to recruit for the open and approved positions that we're already advertising for in the Office of Public Defender. We've received very few, almost none qualified applicants for those positions. In working through the options and alternatives, we've begun reaching out to law students in law schools to try to get something of a pipeline in effect so that we can get some interest in Churchill County. What we found in the process and in observation is that oftentimes we'll get young law students and/or law clerks into Churchill County, and they will realize, after coming here, how great of a community this is. And so what we want to do is try to increase our ability to attract and place young, either law students or new graduates before they pass the bar, to be able to come and work in our county. So the proposal here today is essentially to create the position of legal intern that will allow us to offer an opportunity to, for instance, say, a third-year law student who is still getting credit for the work, but it's a paid position that will attract them here, that will allow us to get them here, make the case for them to stay, and then, of course, potentially get them to apply for the, the positions that we already have open. Just for the Commissioner's knowledge, I think it's pretty clear within this report, but the funds that are proposed that would be paid to, for this position are already approved. This isn't anything above and beyond what we've already done. It's simply trying to use the funds that have been approved to get someone in early so that we can get an application for that full-time attorney position. There's a lot of moving parts to this. I'm happy to answer questions. And I think our proposal, as I, as I've spoken with Kim here in, in HR, is that you could do what's written in this, in this proposal here, or there's another option, which is to approve a casual position, which would be the same, essentially the same hourly rate. It would be $22.18, but it would not be a benefited position. So I think that the technical term that everyone would recognize is casual. And it would be a position limited to just about 1,039 hours a year for one fiscal year. And the total, the total for that would, of course, come out of our existing budget. So, again, the budget number's already there. We've been approved. We're not using it because we don't have those positions filled. We just need a way to get new people in so that they can see what a great place this is. That's our proposal. If you have questions or if there's clarifications, I can happily answer those.
Thank you. Jacob, is there any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Wait, I just want to add a comment that this is truly an additional position because they're not getting rid of any other positions. So this would be something, when the budget comes forward, that would increase the budget in the next fiscal year.
I would also note, and it's in this report, but I just want to note for the record that this is a position that would be reimbursable through the Department of Indigent Defense. That is something they would completely cover, so.
And a little note on that, the DIDs only covers about, the three-year average is 51.72% of all expenditures from the various public defenders.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Sheri. Any other questions or comments from border staff?
I have a question, Jacob. Does this cover in any way our statutory obligation for indigent defense?
It will help, yes. I don't believe that DIDs would view it as an actual attorney position. You know, there's the requirements that we have, 7.4 attorneys to fill the, but it definitely will help because that potential intern would be able to practice under the limited practice rules of the Nevada Supreme Court. So they, they would be able to take some caseload from existing full-time attorneys. So the answer to that is yes. And in speaking with the Department of Indigent Defense, they are very happy that we would consider this as an option because they know law students generally tend to start making decisions before they graduate, and they want to see us kind of get ahead of the curve. So I think they would view this as a positive step.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you aware of anybody else that's doing this, that's had success going down this route?
Not, not yet. In Nevada, are you talking in Nevada?
I'm talking about anywhere.
Oh, yes. This is a common occurrence in a lot of offices of public defender throughout the country where they have legal intern positions that they use as a pipeline for recruiting. Yes, this is a common tactic.
Seems to work for them.
Yes. For instance, and I taught at a conference in Salt Lake this last year, and the director of their program shared with me the success they've had. Of course, Utah has two close law schools close to Salt Lake, and so they, they were able to attract a number of, of young law students from, from that program. So yes.
Thank you.
That answered my question.
And then just between the intern position and the casual position, the only difference is benefits?
I believe that would be the only difference. I think Kim could probably...
That is one of the differences, I think, with the intern position as a casual position. That way, we're not hiring someone on full-time, and it structures the position so there's a better understanding that they're working here while they're in school and to get that additional experience to move forward into a full-time position.
And so are you sort of recommending that it be a casual intern position? Or you'd rather it be?
I think, I, I mean, I'll be honest, I think for recruiting purposes, it would be easier for us to propose that it's a benefited position, but, I mean, we'll take what we can get. I'm not, I'm honestly, I don't have any horse in that race. I just need a position that I can start talking to law students about so that I can start making the offers if they're interested. So I, I think, obviously, it would be easier if we could make the argument that it's a benefited position, but, again, it's up to you.
Mr. Chair, and this is for one position, is that correct?
Yes. And, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from border staff?
Does the other commissioners, you have any comments about being the difference of the two? I know we've struggled with trying to get someone here, so we, I mean, we don't want to strap ourselves down, but...
I agree with Jacob on that. I think if you're gonna recruit, you're gonna have a lot better chance of recruiting somebody with benefits. My, my thought is, is we're gonna want this to turn into an attorney in your office.
That is, that is the plan. I, I don't think I would make an offer if I thought it was gonna be a lost cause. I want someone who I think would be reasonably willing to give us a, give us a shot.
So you'd agree this is like a stepping stone position?
Absolutely. That, that is the only reason we would need this. That's the reason I'm proposing it, because we want, in fact, I know at least one student that I've spoken with recently has indicated they'd like to work in Churchill County, but they're, they're getting, currently, they're getting offers from all over, and if, and if I lose that interest, then, you know, we've kind of lost them, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm just wondering, is, is there a timeline we put on this?
I have no, I, I think I would say this, is that my intent with this position in my office, and of course, this could easily be adjusted to help the district attorney's office if at some point they needed to hire a full-time position, but my intent would not be to have a full staff of attorneys and a legal intern. So this, this would be solely for a pipeline to recruit. However the commissioners want to do that in terms of, we just, you know, I, I have no comment on that other than it's, I'm, I'm not going to use it for anything other than just recruiting for full-time positions.
Unfortunately, you know, we're in a position where we have a tough time recruiting for any positions, so, yeah, I'm for, you know, trying this.
We have to be competitive.
We do.
Correct. Is there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the creation of a paid full-time internship position within the Office of the Public Defender, titled Legal Intern, compensated at grade 44 on the pay table. Step one is 2214.
Mr. Chairman, I make a second to the motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll jump to seven E, where we project presentation from the State Extension Specialist, University of Nevada. Do we have Loretta on the phone? Loretta, can you hear us? Loretta, can you hear us on here or no? Loretta, can you hear us on here or no? Okay, while we wait for Loretta, we're going to move to 7F, Public Hearing, Consideration and Possible Action, Bill 2025-A, Ordnance 32, An Ordnance Amending Title 16 of Churchill County Code, Establishing the I-1, I-2, and I-3 Zonings, Deleting the I-Zoning District, Defining the Zoning and the Design Review Process, Establishing Zoning Requirements for Existing and Additional Industrial Land Uses, Clarifying the Requirements for Power Generation Facilities and Other Matters Related There Too. Randy, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Randy Hines, Public Works Planning and Building. Again, this is the second reading. We had this two weeks ago, so if you guys would like, would like further information, any questions, comments before we, I'm here to answer any of those.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any questions or comments from border staff?
I'd just like to revisit the, the industrial I-3 zoning out of everything in the chart. It's a satisfactory to me. It's just, power transmission is, we seem to be an attraction for that. So I want to make sure that we, you know, and we're trying to tell people that we're open for business, so I want to make sure that we've done everything we can do to accommodate new business. And I think the conditions, like if we were to make that a conditional review, instead of a special use permit, I'm definitely, the staff is qualified to handle that situation and get it moving forward. And that's the only one that I see, I would like to still advocate to, to get changed, knowing that everything else in power transmission, all the other locations are still a special use permit because we definitely, you know, definitely don't want power transmission in an I-2 or an I-1 or any, anywhere else. Do you guys have any additional thoughts on that or did you think about that anymore?
I got some clarification on it, so that'd be solely subject to I-3, correct, Randy?
Yes, that is correct.
And so after that clarification for me, I have no problem with that, with the staff handling that process and that procedure. So that's my thoughts on it.
Yeah, once it's just solely for I-3, I agree.
Okay. And then, you know, like if anybody has any other kind of property, then they come for a special use permit or a rezone to get moved to an I-3, which still can get reviewed for us.
That is correct.
So if it was an A-10, RR-20, they'd have to come to you and actually get a special use permit if they wanted to pursue that?
On RR-20, yes. A-10, no. They're not permitted there, but it's permitted in RR-20 with a special use permit.
Gotcha.
And if they wanted to change it to I-3, then they would go through the zoning, the zone change process, which would come in front of you guys.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Before we get to public comment, we did receive a letter. I'm just going to read it into the record real quick. Dear Clerk, we are, I'm going to butcher this name, so I apologize in advance. Hao Jing Ying and Yu Ping Yang, owner of APN 003-691-65. We wrote this letter because I received your notice about a public hearing about an ordinance amending zoning districts. We received a public rezoning hearing notice, which shows our neighbors' parcels 003-691-61, 003-691-67, 003-691-68, 003-691-69, and 003-691-70 are going to be rezoned for industrial zoning I-1, I-2, or I-3, but our parcels 003-691-65 is not listed in the rezoning plan. We have deep concerns that as neighboring residential zoning parcels will probably be rezoned as industrial zoning and then have pollution to cause our parcels unsuitable for residential usage, although it's residential zoning, then causing our parcels, causing, then cause our parcels useless. If our neighbor, neighbor parcels will be rezoned as industrial zoning I-1, I-2, or I-3, we request your help to rezone my parcels 003-691-65 to similar industrial zoning as those neighboring parcels are. Thank you. We support the plans to rezone this area to industrial zoning to develop this area. Our parcel is also near the Street 95 and also convenient to I-80 freeway by Road 95 and not far away from the railway, so also suitable for industrial zoning, right? If you don't agree with me, we can have a quick phone discussion. My phone number is, I won't read the phone number. Best regards, the landowners. Just going to read that one in there. At this time, is there any other public comment? Go ahead and come up and state your name for the record, please. And again, it'll be the bottom little red button at the base of the microphone.
I'm against the rezoning, you know, out in Hazen and the rest of the area. And I left you guys a, a paper to read. It'll probably take some time to read and understand it, but I'm finally complying with the Attorney General's Office. Okay. I already described the damages that the county commissioners already committed against with the businesses that are out there in Hazen already. And I described a few of them and I look forward to working with you guys with this problem and, but our property values are going to go drop, your human rights, everything because there's millions and millions of dollars worth of property out there. And you've already done, I'm not sure what the damages the waterographer in Hazen, but the water table is five feet underneath the Hazen store. And you can actually, when you drive through Hazen up to the right or left, depending which way you're going, the water table is right on top of the ground. And tests will have to be determined if there's any current or future problems basically poisoning the people of Churchill County and Hazen. So it's just going to take some time to get through and work things out. But I left my phone number, email address. Email is the best way to get ahold of me, but I look forward to working things out because, you know, most of us moved to this small hazen town, do the politics, not from California, Reno, we want to just get away from everything. And if we start, you know, there's already significant noise damage you can hear and other problems that I, I see in the future. So just feel free to contact me and I'll, I'm going to finish typing this up and send it to the Attorney General, Judge Aaron Ford, and see if we can work, work this out, but it's, I don't see anything happening. You know, about rezoning or anything, just keep the status quo. And if you want me to know my background, I'll more than gladly tell you my history, my family in an email if you'd like to know.
And could you get, get your name for the record as well?
Steven Vogel, V-Sin Victor O-G-E-L.
Perfect, thank you. And just for some clarification, we're not rezoning any ground for new industrial. This is all simply clarifying the industrial ground we already have. And for the sole reason of creating a symbiotic relationship, I guess you could say, you know, where that I-1 is a less aggressive type of industrial, the I-2 is a step up and the I-3 is the most aggressive form. And so the whole entire reason for that is to create a buffer in between residential areas and these, this industrial ground, to clarify that.
Okay. Now, the map you guys sent out, I mean, it's useless. And I don't think anybody really realizes what's going to go on in that areas because you have a bunch of circles on the map and you can't even tell what specific areas there are in there as well. But I know it was zoned industrial a long time ago and the first business that went in there is an old company, Road Oils and stuff like that, and there's contamination all over the place. I have actually a cup of oil sands from that plant that they said that there's no byproduct or anything to worry about and it lied. There's just a lot of those things in there that we're not going to agree with. But I'd like to explain in more detail what you guys plan and what's going on and we submit it to the people of Hazen and the rest of Churchill County because you actually have to have written consent from us, we the people, before you can move on anything. And I've studied the charges of freedom extensively for the last 34 years and much of my research is going to go to the Trump administration. So I'm protecting my sister's property, my property, and as well as the people in Hazen.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Go ahead and come up and state your name for the record, please.
Hi. This map, I do not understand. I don't know what is being changed in my area. It is close to.
Hello?
Loretta, give us one second. We'll jump right back to you. We're on another agenda item.
Hello, this is Loretta with Cooperative Extension.
Yep, we can hear you, Loretta. Give us one second. We're going to finish this agenda item, then we'll come back to you. Does that work for you?
Oops.
Go ahead, man.
I'm just trying to go off the lettering. I wasn't able to make it to the earlier meetings you had, but there's, it's hard for me to tell by this map what's going to affect my general locale. I live out by the airport and the road toward the transfer station, before the transfer station started, was great. There was very little garbage, very little debris in the road, and now at least once a week, I'm having to pull over my car and pull items out of the middle of the roadway because they're falling off of vehicles or out of whatever the trucks are driving them in. So for a safety standpoint, that would be my only issue, is first finding out what affects my area, what changes that would cause, and then the actual living conditions around it. So that's my statement.
Randy, could you address that for us?
Yeah, I mean, that's actually the, the next agenda item. It's not on this agenda item, so.
Oh, sorry about that.
No problem. We'll, we'll get to that and then you can have a public comment on that one as well.
All right, okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Yeah, we could, Jeff, could you just, for the last public comment before the man right here, could you just give us some clarification on, we're not actually changing the zoning. We are restructuring our zoning and how we do it. Could you just give some clarification on that?
Yes, and, and Randy, if you have anything additional on Mr. Sanford, but currently we're on the agenda item for the adoption of the amendments, the ordinance, right, to the county code. And so we're talking about a modification of what qualifies and what we consider industrial zoning and the different industrial, right now, and I'll, I'll submit it to Mr. Sanford, but right now we have industrial zoning and this is expanding it to three different industrial zones, so people have a better idea of how to proceed when they look into that, but I'll, I'll submit it to Mr. Sanford.
Thank you, Joe Sanford, for the record with the district attorney's office. As Mr. Weed explained, this agenda item is the ordinance related to the amendments of the county code. Currently, we have one single industrial section, the industrial zone. All industrial activity is listed within that zone. The map that was shown earlier, that was blanketed kind of red color, that is the current industrial zone across the entire county. What this amendment would do is create the I-1, I-2, and I-3 zones. The I-1 is a light industrial, commercial industrial. I-2 is regular industrial and I-3 is a heavy industrial. And so only property that is currently industrial is being considered today in the next agenda item, but those will be rezoned and redefined from the current I-zone to either I-1, I-2, or I-3.
Okay, thank you both. Hopefully that kind of addresses your concern. So again, when we were looking at this, as I stated before, we wanted to try to keep I-1, if it's going to be near residential, I-1, so it's a very, very lighter industrial. Nothing's actually switching to industrial. It's already zoned industrial. And so it's going to be a much lighter version of industrial and then as it steps up, we move further and further away. So I-3's, you know, envisioned, there's other ones as well, but like up by I-80 where no one really lives, there is some residence, but it's up there where it's not really going to affect our residents. And then again, you can always contact the planning department and they can give you that actual map and explain it to you where that would be for your location. And it'll be on the next one as well, yes. Is there any other public comment? Okay, if none, any other questions or comments from border staff? Okay, a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the zoning map amendment for the industrial, industrial zones as presented.
It'll, it'll be the Bill 2025-A, Ordnance 32.
My computer just blinked.
That's, yeah, we're on, we're on item 7F and I think you may be looking at G.
I'll amend that motion to approve Bill 2025-A, Ordnance 32, as submitted.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Thanks, computer. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chair, because you guys, you guys have to address the solar.
Oh, the solar?
Yes. You have to, you have to put that into the motion.
Can I get an amendment to that motion, please, for the solar generation on I-3 zoning?
And that would be to approve for a conditional zoning permit in I-3.
Do you want to amend?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to include the conditional use permit instead of, instead of a special use permit for the power I-3.
Does that work, Jeff?
Conditional zoning permit.
Conditional zoning permit.
Yep.
For the I-3.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second to the motion as revised.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We'll jump to 7G, Consideration and Possible Action. An ordinance amending zoning districts in, is under consideration by Churchill County. Current industrial zone parcels listed below will be designated as I-1, light industrial, I-2, medium industrial, or I-3, heavy industrial. I'm going to skip over reading all those, but they're listed in the agenda as well as online. So with that, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy Hines, Public Works Planning and Building. Pam, if we could bring up that first map, please. This, so this is the, this is the current industrial zone parcels. As, as Mr. Sanford stated, we are, we are concentrating our efforts on the currently industrial zone parcels within the county. And if we can expand that map, you could see that this, within the county, we have a hundred, approximately 173 or 78 part, industrial zone parcels, and you can kind of see they're all over the county. Just to give a little bit of clarification, we've got the Hazen area, we've got the Canemental area up north, we have the Leatville Junction area, and then we've got the Fallon Municipal Airport area. So, so, and then down at the way bottom, you, the landfill is down at the way bottom. See, this, this kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like currently. If you can switch to the next page, Pam, please. And if you can just enlarge that a little bit more. Oh, I'm sorry, push it out, sorry. My bad. Want to see the whole paper. There we go. So as you can see, we've got, these are the proposed I-1, I-2, and I-3 zones that, that we've just did the code changes for. I-1 is red, I-2 is green, and I-3 is blue. Again, the I-1 is the commercial industrial. Those are more catered to be around resident, residential parcels. And as we get in these expanded views, you'll see that better.
Hello?
Loretta, give us one second. We're going to finish up with this agenda item. We'll be right back to you.
And then again, the I-2 is, is the, the industrial section and I-3, which are the blue areas, you can see are farther out into the north sections of land, south of Hazen, and then of course, south of town, the, the landfill. Next slide, please, and I'll go, kind of go over some of these enlarged areas to kind of give a little bit clarity. You're good? So this one, we expanded from the previous map to include the Bango, the Bango Road area, just so we can show that as well. But as you can see, we've got IRGA Port of Nevada up on the upper left, we've got Peak Brothers, and I'm just trying to throw some names of, of businesses that you can see out there. Those are considered I-2, right, a little, little outside, along the highway. Those are kind of existing uses with, with extra, with empty parcels as well. Omaha Track, which is around the town of Hazen, those, those are currently industrial zones. We're keeping those as I-1 to be commercial industrial, right, again, right around residences. As we head farther east, we've got. As we head farther east, we've got I-2 along the highway, and as you get off the highway, you've got I-3. And then you can see that, that section of land where it's red, green, blue, we designated, those are 16 different parcels in that section. We've got the red, which is I-1, along the residential parcels. And then we stagger it out to be I-3 as you get farther away from those. The, if we go down to Safety Clean on Bango Road, those are all proposed to be I-3 parcels. And then with the, there's, there's actually a junkyard down there as well, which, which would be I-3. And then we've got that, this kind of designates the I-2, that's a big, large parcel that Redwood Materials owns, that would be, that portion of that parcel would be an I-2 parcel along the highway. So that kind of explains this one. We could move to the next slide, please, Pam. This is the Leetville Junction area. Again, you've got New Millennium, we've got Card Trucking. As we head farther west, we make those more I-2 parcels because there's not a lot of residents. As you come further east, you get into the residential areas, and we've made those I-1. Next slide, please. Oh, you're good, Pam. This is the area that's along the Fallon Municipal Airport and Rattlesnake Hill. Again, those are I-1, we kept those I-1 because they're essentially surrounded by, by residences, especially the parcel that's along US Highway 50 or Alternate 50. That's that field south of Rio Vista, that subdivision there. We've left that as I-1. We did keep the stuff over there by the transfer station, I-2, because it is separated, but we kept those two parcels to the north. You can see that little flag as being I-1, because again, those are closer to residences. But the stuff on the south is not. So again, the landfill would be more of a heavier industrial use, or the transfer station, there's a junkyard there, would be a heavier, so those existing uses are heavier uses, so we've kept those as I-2. And then I think there's just one last slide, Pam. And then this is out at Kennametal. Again, you know, a lot, most of the comments we've been getting is, you know, we should have our heavy industrial out, out in the middle of the desert, right? Perfect place for this. Through the, through the workshops, through the planning commission, these were kind of mixed I-2, I-3. We, we, it was all agreed and recommended to you to put all these as I, they were, they were I-2 and I-3, we've put them all as I-3. Again, try to encourage that heavier industrial uses out, out farther away from residents. So I think that's the last slide, Pam. So with that, again, our office is open if, if anybody wants to. I know these maps are kind of hard to see. There's a lot of parcels in there. If people would like to come in and look at them, ask questions, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Randy, just for absolute clarity, this is not creating any new industrial parcels. These are only changing existing I-1, I, excuse me, existing industrial parcels to either I-1, I-2, or I-3. That's correct?
That is correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any questions or comments from board or staff?
I will just tell you that the big reason why we did this was, was just a big industrial. And that's how you have things slip in next to you if there's no parameters. So we really were looking out for the safety of our residents, and, and that's the real purpose of this, is to keep things that are dangerous hazardous materials way away from town. So we all live here, we want to be safe, we want to keep our residents safe, so that's our main objective.
Very well said. Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Did that answer your questions for you on what it looked like out by you? Okay, good. Awesome. Okay, perfect. Any other public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the correct motion. Motion to adopt the zoning map amendment for industrial zone properties as listed in this agenda item.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Randy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, just real quick, say thank you to staff, Dean and Amos and Joe. This is, Diane has put a lot of time and effort in on this, this code change, and it's greatly appreciated with their efforts on that.
We'd like to thank your office as well. Thank you, guys. Okay, let's jump back to 7E, where we project presentation from the State Extension Specialist, University of Nevada.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if you could give me one second. They cannot hear us, but we can hear her, so I am going to also call in. I'm going to see if it will use our ring phone to, to call her and see if that will help, so she can hear us. I don't know why this won't work. I'll use my cellphone.
Hello?
Hi, Loretta, this is Pam in the chambers. I'm just going to keep this, I'm going to keep this here so that you can also hear us as you're doing your presentation. And bear with me as you direct me to what you want me to display, okay?
Sure.
And you can go ahead and begin.
Okay, so if you're looking at the first slide, we'll start there. My name is Loretta Singletary. I'm a faculty member with the University of Nevada Reno Cooperative Extension. I've been with UNR Extension for 28 years, so have enjoyed working throughout the state. And so what I wanted to share with you today is a project that we've started funded by the National Science Foundation. The title of it is Where We Live, where we're looking and trying to better understand how rural communities in Nevada are coping with drought, heat, and wildfire. We also, the grant is to UNR, as well as to the University of Idaho and the University of South Carolina. It's a three-state partnership, and I also have a subcon grant to Desert Research Institute. So if you want to go to the next slide. So as I said, the aim of our project is to better understand what and how we can better adapt to these three hazards. Idaho will be focusing primarily on wildfire, Nevada will focus more on drought, and South Carolina will focus more on heat, although all three states are looking at all three hazards. And if we can understand how individuals are coping, it may help us to better understand how communities, and in the case of rural Nevada, you know, how entire counties are coping. Our study area in Nevada is the Humboldt River Basin. And as you know, the counties that have the largest land area in the basin are Persian, Lander, Humboldt, and Elko. However, the sub-basins in the Humboldt River Basin extend into White Pine, Eureka, Northern Nye, and also Churchill Counties. Okay, go to the next slide, please. And so if you can see the pictures of our team, there I am, that's a very old picture, and my colleagues Elizabeth and Koble at UNR, and Bee Gordon, she's at DRI, and Christine Albano is at DRI, and then we have two post-docs, Gina Gilson and Enik Adam, who are at UNR. And so they each have different types of expertise. Enik is our ag economist, PhD from Oklahoma State University, and Elizabeth and Gina are working on the policy issues, and Bee and Christine are our hydrologists. And so as the case with many of our research projects and extension projects, this one also features a survey of the public. And so anyone can take the e-survey, which won't take very much time at all, if you're a non-agricultural producer. You just have to be ages 18 years and older, and we have a link to that that you'll see shortly. But the purpose of those questions, again, is to assess how you're coping with drought, heat, and wildfire risks. If you are an agricultural producer, there's a special set of questions that Enik has developed, and he needs those responses in order to be able to run his model, because it's really important for us to also understand and report the economic burden that drought poses to agricultural producers throughout this eight-county area. We also have an opportunity for those who are interested to participate in 30-minute interviews with Gina Gilson, and she'll be asking open-ended questions about, you know, how, what are the challenges that rural communities face, and ag producers, and public lands managers, and policymakers face with regards to drought, in addition to these other hazards. And then finally, you can go to the final slide. And so we'd love to hear from all of you, and there's a QR code here that will take you to the e-survey, and I'll try to put a link to the e-survey in the chat, or ask Enik to do that, since we're having some technical difficulties on our end. I apologize for that. And then here's my email information and Gina's email information, if you'd like to give an interview, or if you just have any questions or want to talk about this project. But we'd encourage as many people as possible to participate. The more responses we get, the more confident we can feel about our final report. And if I haven't said it already, we are required by the university and by the National Science Foundation to adhere to strict protocols that guarantee confidentiality. So there's no way we can trace the responses anyone gives through the e-survey. And as for the interviews, your responses would be completely anonymous and de-identified. We can guarantee that. And so when we write our report, the, the information we report is anonymous, de-identified, and in summary form. And so with that, thank you again for allowing me into your meeting today, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Loretta. Is there any questions or comments from board or staff? I did have one question for you, Loretta. Even though we're not in those basins that you guys are focusing on, did you still want people to submit the e-survey, or no?
Yes, I mean, I, we'll be able on our end, on the back end, to sort of tease out which are in the basin direct. And so even if you're not, and it's a great question, if you're not sure that where you live or work, because it can also include if you're working in these places, you don't necessarily have to reside there. Many of our public lands managers, and in fact, even some of our ranchers, may not live where their ranches and where their assigned management areas are. So it's fine to complete it if you're just working in that area. But you're right, many of us don't know if we're in a sub-basin or not. So I would say err on the side of just, just being, you know, honest about the community you live in, and on our end, we'll be able to sort that out, because all information and feedback, I think, is valuable.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments from board or staff? Okay, thank you for your time, Loretta. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll jump to 7H, consideration of possible action and abandonment of easement application, AE 25-3, filed by Gary Lacka trustee of Danny 1987 Trust Agreement for property located on Conrad Place, APN number 006-231-74, consisting of 7.29 acres in the A5 zoning district whereby the applicant proposes to abandon the drainage easement along the east and south side of the parcel. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So this is a fairly straightforward application. The applicant's requesting the abandonment of a 20-foot-wide irrigation easement located on one of his properties. The easement was intended to be a private easement, which would have been much easier to dispose of, but that distinction was accidentally left off, and so we're going through the regular procedure. The easement was to protect future irrigation easement, irrigation needs if the lot was sold to another party. Since that time, the applicant has revised the development plans, and the easement is no longer needed, and he would like to abandon it. The application has gone through all the required procedures in state law and county code, and be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request to abandon an unused 20-foot-wide irrigation easement, application AE 25-3, located within parcel four of parcel map recorded as document number 465024 on January 19, 2018, in the official records of Churchill County, Nevada, as described in the application, and with changes required by the county surveyor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome. Just FYI, there'll be an order of abandonment for your signature to resolve this. Okay, thank you.
7I, consideration of possible action, approval of Resolution 14-2025 authorizing the disposal of broken property from county offices. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. This is a resolution requesting abandonment of extra equipment at the DA's office that is now broken or no longer needed under NRS 332.185. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the Resolution 14-2025 to dispose of the broken property.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Joe. 7J, consideration of possible action, ratification of agreement between the State and Nevada Department of Human Services and Churchill County Social Services to provide direct assistance and referrals to social services for individual and family needs in the amount of $23,723. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Shannon Ernst for the record. So we're receiving the Family Resource Funds again this year, and this is awarded through Health and Human Services. Really, it supports some staffing to put on our special events, such as Community Day, Pin Wheels for Prevention. Further, we contract with JPO to provide parenting classes through Core Order and other agency referrals. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and ratify the agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. 7K, consideration of possible action, ratification and approval of the appointment of John Hong to the Churchill County Library Director at an advanced step placement of grade 72, step seven, and approval of the $2,000 for moving expenses. Kim?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Kim Bronsma, Churchill County Human Resources. We, last week at the library board meeting, the Board of Trustees did approve hiring the new library director at Range 72, step seven. We are requesting your approval of this advanced step placement. We had received 19 applications for the position. Of those nine met the minimum qualifications, and of the four that were invited for interviews, we ended up interviewing two candidates. So it was a, it was quite a process, and we thought, based on Title III, though the advanced step placement is covered in the current fiscal year's budget, it will need to be approved for register going forward. So we're requesting your approval for that.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? I will add my own comment, so I sit on library board, as you guys know. It has been extremely challenging to fill this position, and the library has been bumping along, so I really advocate for this, so I, it's been, it's been a challenge, as Kim knows, as well as, you know, the public knows, it's been a challenge. So I'd really advocate for this. He interviewed great, he's a great guy, so that's all I have to say about that. With that, if there's no public comment, could I get a motion for this agenda item, please?
I would just like to mention that there is definitely, you know, a hiring issue, you know, with people available. So we have to make everything attractive, and otherwise, we're going to fall way behind, so. Thank you for your hard work on this. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to ratify and approve the library board of trustees appointment of John Hong as the Churchill County Library Director at an advanced step placement of grade 72, step seven, and approval of a $2,000 moving expense.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Kim. 7L, consideration of possible action, review of the Churchill County Rural Public Health Laboratory, and discussion of closure. Shannon?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So in late 2020, it was brought to us to develop a lab plan and actually create the first rural public health lab in the state of Nevada. It was very successful in bringing it forward through a partnership with the state of Nevada. The goal originally was to be a partner with UNR School of Medicine and really make this a satellite. Through agreements that did not work out in the state- Through agreements that did not work out, and the state requested that we make it the Churchill County Rural Public Health Lab. We have been running this lab at very low capacity, based on the fact of less amounts of COVID, things of that nature. We were funded through December of 2026 for this lab, but we are supposed to be sustainable after that time. In March, we did have a large amount of clawbacks impact the lab. We have had trouble keeping a generalist. The workforce for a generalist in the rural areas is extremely challenging. We do have one employee in the lab at this time, which is a laboratory assistant, which is Caleb Pleasure. She's doing an amazing job, and it'll take two years for her to become a generalist. But we don't provide the lab services here necessary for her to obtain that. So we've been looking on how she could work outside of the area to complete. One of the big goals with the lab was to look at being able to do different tests that were not provided here in the state of Nevada. And one of the big ones is for opioids. We were going to look at getting the mechanism to have the equipment there, partner with the courts, law enforcement. Well, it had been notified in the last two months that actually the UNR School of Medicine had obtained the equipment last year, and they're going to proceed with our new lab director that is there now. That was really my sustainability plan for the lab. So now that does not work within the rural areas. I cannot develop a sustainable plan for this. I've been talking to the state. They don't have any mechanism to help us to boost our specimens here to keep workforce. And so we have come to kind of negotiated a way to make this a win for both. We could look at keeping Caleb Pleasure on as our employee under grant funds. We can then have her commute to Reno and obtain her generalist license through the UNR School of Medicine at their lab and Renown. So we're building the workforce for our community, which was one of our main goals. But then transfer all of our lab equipment to different areas that was purchased through the grants. This morning, when I spoke to them, some of the equipment would go to Southern Nevada, some would go to Northern Nevada, so that it helps them there. But then ultimately, we would not have the lab here. The remaining grant funds, very minimal, that is left after our impacts in March, would be distributed out to those other labs. We would just only hold the amount to pay Kayla. If this is approved today, we would work on a closure plan, distribution of assets that are actually still the state's for another five years, and then an agreement on the personnel if this is approved. Any questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the closure plan and authorize the Director of Social Services to negotiate personnel contracts and funding agreements to support this action.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. 7M, presentation about pump tracks for recreational use for future consideration. Stephen Ryan Christie, you're up.
All right. So my name's Stephen Christie, local farmer, musician, traveler guy. And my wife did 21 years in the Navy and retired as a lieutenant, and we have a beautiful four-year-old daughter, as you can see from my fingernails here. And we travel about three months a year, all throughout the US, to see both my wife and my family and friends. And everywhere we go, I Google and we find pump tracks to go to on our, on our routes. And they're incredible. They're the new thing. We need one in the valley. They're, they're the best piece of recreational pleasure I've ever found in my life. So it's a pump track. So are any of you familiar? It's, so a skate park. Now, I love our skate park, but those have vert. I'm too old for our skate park. Most people aren't talented enough to use skate parks. These are just flowing hills. And once you get to a park, a pump track, you learn the track, and then on either a skateboard, bicycle, or a scooter, you, you gain perpetual motion, and you can just stay in it and keep going and going. It's just a ton of fun. So it, you know, and it meets the SNPLMA Act, the Harry Reid Act. It's for recreation. It's about health, and no one has to pay for it. It's far superior than a, than a splash pad that's only going to be open three to four months a year, right? It's open 365 days a year. Even if it's snowing, a kid could take out a sled. My four-year-old daughter, she just goes on them and runs them when we go places. And I just, I love them. And you get into them, and once you get going, I mean, I swear, you guys, ten or 20 minutes on one of these things on a skateboard, and my legs are whooped for, for a week. It's like doing 1,000 squats. It's just incredible, using your core, your back, your legs, everything. They're incredibly fun. The craze started about 20 years ago. Bezolutions is the country, the company from Switzerland that has really dominated the market building them. And so now they partnered up with ARC, A R C, which is in Missouri, American Ramp Company, and they're building them all over the country. The closest one from here is in Utah, south of town, south of Salt Lake City. So I've been, I've been talking to a guy, Lucas, who's the regional, the western regional salesman, and he sent me all the comps. The biggest one right now in the country is being built in Chico, California, and it's going to be five acres. It breaks down to a million dollars an acre to build one of these things. Oh, yeah. So she's pulling up to break, if we find some ground that we'd want to put one up. And you can do, one of my favorite ones is in Santa Cruz, California, and it's only on a half acre. So you only need about 20,000 square feet, right? And once we find some ground where we can put one of these, it's $15,000 to, for them to design it and give us an estimate. Like I said, the biggest one in the country is being built right now in Chico for $5 million. So, you know, when we have SNPLMA funds and we're awarded funds for recreation, I just want to make all of you aware that this is what we got to do, and I hope that you put it at the top of your list and, and know that we could do one for a half acre for less than a million dollars, and that's good enough. Or if we did one that was six acres or more, which is looking at $6 million or more, then we'd have the biggest one in the country, you know? And so it would be a big, shining jewel for Fallon if we have the recreational funds available that are awarded to us. And what else do I want to tell you guys? But it's just, it's been like my greatest pleasure going to these. And, and when I travel and I go to them, you know, people come for miles around just to come to these places. So it would be a good investment for our, for our valley. And of course, when we, when we do get one, you know, I would, I would spearhead the movement to get the competitions, the races, or whatever. But, but the barrier to entry is so, so small, and there's no, there's no consequence, you know? A little kid gets on them and the, the ground, could you go back to the photos of the actual pump tracks? The ground just fades away. There's one in Corcoran. See, these ones are, these ones are green, but here in Corcoran, this is really similar to our hometown. It's an ag town in California, so it would just be on dirt. It doesn't have to be on grass like those three photos. But just saying that any kid can get on them, or any, any person, young or old, and there's no consequence. You're not falling off the ground. The dirt naturally goes away from the asphalt. Asphalt's a cheaper material. And anyway, that's about, that's about my spiel. Pam, how did I do? All right. Yeah. So I, again, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. It's really important to me, and, you know, I think it would be just, just the coolest thing to, as an addition to our accounting for, for health recreation. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Any questions or comments from border staff?
No, I've never heard of these, but it looks pretty fun.
They're awesome. He filled me in, so I think, you know, as those SNPLMA funds come available, so it's a two-year process, every two years, you can apply for it, or whenever the board decides, I guess, technically speaking. And that's something we can definitely look at for one of the many park projects we have planned, so.
Yeah. And just, yeah, please bug me if there's anything else I can do to keep it, keep it going. And, but yeah, they started about, Matt, they started about 20 years ago gaining popularity. And it's the new thing, and yeah, it's, it's like, it's like the feeling of surfing or flying meets bicycles or skateboards or scooters, so.
I would encourage you to maybe make an appointment with the county manager, make sure he has all your contact information, and maybe a little more in-depth
Okay.
... writing of what you're doing, so whenever the time comes, he'll have all the information he needs to help implement that into the plan.
So we can get into the SNPLMA? Okay. Okay, wonderful.
And you can contact his office to make an appointment.
Okay, that'd be great. I will do that. Okay. Well, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Have a wonderful day.
Did anyone want to pull any letters received? Okay. We'll jump to new business, 9A, consideration of possible action, advanced step appointment upon promotion of Joe Sanford to Assistant County Manager, HR Director, at an additional cost of $4,988.96 per year. Kim?
Hello, Kim Bronsima, Churchill County Human Resources.
Joe Sanford?
An interview, interviews were held on September 8th for the Assistant County Manager, HR Director position, and the panel unanimously selected Joe Sanford due to his qualifications and his extensive working knowledge of the county that he comes in with. So we are requesting an advanced step placement. So normally, when, this would be considered a promotion, so he would be eligible for two steps higher than what he is in the next range. That would be, let's see, grade 86, step five. We are asking for a grade 85, I'm sorry, I can't say, 86, step six. So just one more step up, based on his qualifications, the responsibilities of the position, and our discussions with him. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the advanced step placement of Joe Sanford to step six of grade 86, 147, 284, 80 annually.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
We'll jump to 7B, consideration of possible action, notification of, notification of an approval of the appointment, apportionment of fiscal year 2025 federal payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $3,071,354. Sherry? Okay.
Sherry Wyman, comptroller for the record. The first item that I'm going to go through is our federal pelt. And our federal pelt came in at $296,354 greater than anticipated than was budgeted. And so what we need to do is, well, let me, first, let me give you a little feedback on, or a little flashback to the 2025 budget. During the 2025 budget, we had budget problems, and to make it balance and where we could get the fund balances good enough to be submitted per regulations with taxation. So during that budget, at the very end, we had to remove the 3% general adjustment. We also removed any supplemental personnel request. We removed any supplemental services and supplies, and removed all the capital outlay. And then we put the delay and the gaps in unfilled positions. And we requested that services and supplies be cut by 15% if possible. So that's the history as to where we are now. And so in the next three items, what I'm going to try to do is show you where we are and what we're doing with the extra money. Let me find my piece of paper here. Normally, in the past, we'd like to, as much as possible, fund our reserves. That would be our building reserve, our extraordinary repairs, various project accounts, so that we can build our ability to fund projects in the future. So that's kind of been our goal in the past. When we did the budget in 2025, we took a lot of the general revenues, and we put them in the general fund so that we could be solid. And so in doing that, we reduced some of the general funds that went into some of the special revenues funds, like social services and Parks and Rec. So that's the backstory. So if we go back to the pelt page that was up there a minute ago? Yeah, please. So you can see here, this is the history of how we've allocated the funds that we get from the federal government for various funds. And due to not funding the social services or Parks and Rec and increased expenditures, we're going to need to put the extra revenue, the greater-than-anticipated revenue into Parks and Rec for the federal pelt. So that's what I'm asking for, the federal pelt, and that would give them an additional $296,354,000 of the pelt money. So that's this item here. Do you have any questions on that one?
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to note the receipt of the FY 2025 federal payment in lieu of taxes, and to approve the properment to the funds as recommended by the comptroller.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 9C, consideration of possible action, apportionment of fiscal year 2025 less-than-anticipated geothermal revenue in the amount of $26,987.48. Sherry?
Thank you. Now, this is the geothermal, and if we could do the, just the history one, that would be good. Next one down. Yeah, I think it's the next one. Let's just go for the next one. Yeah, this gives us a history. As you can see, and if you could make it smaller, please, so we can, okay. As you can see, in 2025, we got a lot less geothermal than we have in the last few years. So what we do is we allocate, we budget, the budget for geothermal for this was $875,000. And then that was, every time we get a payment, a percentage of that is put into all the various funds. Well, we got less than the $875,000. And so it was short by $26,987.48. So it's just less, and, but the way that it was allocated, we're just going to leave it that way, so we don't have to transfer funds. But a lot of times, the geothermal is, is less because of abatements. And this comes from the state, and they allocate it to us. So that's this one here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the apportionment of the less-than-anticipated FY 25 geothermal revenue as recommended by the comptroller.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 9D, consideration of possible action, apportionment of the fiscal year 2025 CTX revenue in the amount of $9,112,693.01. Sherry?
Thank you. And if we could just put the, the summary one up, please, that'd be great. Yeah, I'll tell you when to stop. No, next one. Please. Perfect. Thank you. Here, this is the sales tax, and as you know, you've been getting all my emails, sales tax has been squirrely this year, and we got a whole bunch of our payments just like in this last few weeks. So how it ended was we got nine, a total of sales tax of $9,112,693.01 for the year. That gives us a greater-than-anticipated fund balance of $425,693.01. So that was good. And that gives us a higher-than-anticipated, it was above budget, but if you recall, we've been like 8% below budget all year until the last month. So when we went through augmentations, I didn't augment any of the sales tax because we were below budget. However, so that being said, the budget for the general fund was $8 million. And so... and so, let me see, how can I phrase this? The social, social services budget was only twenty-five thousand dollars, and as you know at the fund balance, they've been running negative all year. So to get them not to be negative and to have a cushion in their fund balance of about a hundred thousand dollars, they need to get about, they need to get four hundred and ninety thousand and eight dollars into that fund to true it up rolling into the current fiscal year. That'll give them roughly a hundred thousand dollar balance, and hopefully, they will be in a stronger position in 2026. And then Parks and Rec, same thing, they're still a negative balance, so the additional amount that I'd like to give them is two hundred and one thousand and sixteen dollars. However, what this will do is it will not meet our, our budgeted amount for the general fund. It will reduce, it'll be less than budget by two, two hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-nine cents, which could be a finding with taxation because we're supposed to like meet our budget and then allocate greater than anticipated fund balances. What that would require is just a letter to taxation. And I've spoken with taxation and they are aware of the problems with the sales tax. So it would just be a letter coming from the comptroller's office. So that's how I'd like to allocate the money to keep all the funds positive. And what this will do for our general fund is we'll only have about fifty-five thousand dollars of greater than anticipated opening fund balance in the current fiscal year. And that's what you use to increase revenues. It might be more, I mean, this is your estimates because we're still getting some revenues in for the prior year, but, so we won't, we will be meeting our opening fund balance for the year that we're in, so we're not negative, so that's good for the general fund. But we don't have a whole lot of opening fund balance to fund outside of budget projects or items.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
On the, on the finding for the taxation department, this is going to be a common problem though across all counties, right? Didn't we all, all counties have the same reduction in sales tax?
I don't know how they manage their budget. I know I spoke to various counties and they were going to put a receivable in, so they were hoping, but everybody was running really low, and I'm not sure how they manage their budget. But taxation didn't say, I mean, that happens frequently, and it may not be, the auditors didn't seem to think it was a problem, but in speaking with my rep at taxation, she said it would just be a letter. We could blame it on economic forum for changing the way they're producing the reports.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the apportionment of the C T X revenue as recommended by the comptroller.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Did anyone want to pull anything off the consent agenda item? If not, a motion to approve those, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'd like, can we go back to letters received on letter D? We, that's the one we got a protest on, right? And it's all still active and everything's, we're still in position there, right?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well, that was, yeah, that was protest, and then it'll move to an appeal process after this. Does anyone have any, or eleven, does anyone have anything they want to consider for a future agenda item? Okay, if not, we'll move on to.
Mr. Chair, on that, on that item, Matt had mentioned, I was typing minutes, so it refreshed my memory, needing to move the November meeting. Is that still a need? Because I will put it on the next agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll put that on the next agenda. Anything else?
I also noticed when I was reviewing, we, it says we have scheduled a meeting for January the first. That's going to be a holiday if you wanted to start working on that one, do you?
Well, statutes provide for that to be the next business day.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll jump to Commissioner and Management Staff Report. We'll start with you, Commissioner Hyde.
Nothing right now.
I had a library board meeting, an I E C. meeting for the Navy, as well as an R T C. Regional Transportation Committee meeting. Commissioner Blakey?
Attended fire board meeting, went to the nine-eleven ceremony. Stillwater Conservation District was canceled. Attended the proclamation reading with the City of Fallon on Saturday for suicide prevention this month. Attended a museum board meeting, and there will be a lecture series on the twenty-seventh at twelve P.M. at the museum, hosting the Dragger Ranch. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Sanford on his promotion and his new position. I think he'll do well. And once again, I'd like to ask everyone, the citizens, the community and staff, to embrace our new leadership here as we're getting going here and running. And I just look forward to him adding him to the team, and I think we're getting ready to do great things for the community. And of course, we can't do it unless we have community and staff input, so we encourage everyone to, let's all get together and get after it. Thanks.
Very well said. Sherry?
Nothing, thank you.
Jeff?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris? Oh, yeah, just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Immediately following this meeting, I'm going to be heading down to Las Vegas for the lithium symposium through Friday. Next week, on Tuesday through Thursday, I will be down in Las Vegas again for the State NACO Conference, the Snipluma site visit. Our program manager is coming up from Las Vegas to do the pre-work site inspection, which is a requirement prior to notice of award. That will be here on Wednesday, and Mr. Sanford will be looking after that on behalf of the county. And then something I wanted to bring up, this has been mentioned a couple of times at this meeting, but it hasn't really been formalized, and now that Joe is on board with, with H.R. and the county manager's office, H.R. and the county manager's office is going to commence with a countywide compensation study. We will be in the next thirty days coming in front of you to outline the plan of how we're going to do that, but it's our intention to have the information to you prior to budget time for next fiscal year. So I wanted to make you aware of that. If you have any questions and concerns or have any input, we'd love to hear it, but within the next thirty days, we'll be in front of you with, with our plan. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Pam?
I just wanted to mention that Linda's attending the CFOA meeting in Tonopah this week. Next week, she's going to be in Las Vegas for election official training, and I'm thrilled to report that we have a new employee starting on Monday. Hope it still happens because the last one backed down on Friday. So we'll have somebody starting then, and then the following Monday, we should have another one starting, but we are down crystal in my office, so after a year of training, I have to start over.
D.A. Mallory? Denise? Okay. Claims and payroll are going around right now. At this time, is there any public comment? This is the last period for public comment. Okay, noting no public comment, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.